Chair this meeting, Father. We ask that every thought, action, reaction, and every decision be inspired by your Holy Grace. For you establish all power, and there is no power greater than yours. And Father God, we pray that you chair not only this meeting, but the capital of this state of Alabama and the White House. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes ma'am.
Councilmember Daves.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's good to see everyone this morning. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, includes cell phone, pagers, et cetera, please put it on the off or the vibrated position at this time. Again, if anyone has a cell phone, pager, any type of electronic device, we ask at this time that you put on the off or the vibrated position. Also, any person designed to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution ordinance appeal a public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name and address. Any person designed to speak to the council on a non-agenda item must contact the city clerk office no later than 2:00 PM on a Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject he or she wishes to address must be identified and pertain to the city of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the city clerk office and wishes to speak on a non-agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remains for summarizing. The second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain the form, there would be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk?
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see you this morning. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to join eight of the ten Big Ten mayors, as they're called, representing the ten largest cities in the state of Alabama. We had breakfast with Governor Ivey, had an opportunity to understand what's on her agenda, especially as it relates to the upcoming special session and what they'll be looking forward to doing in the regular session, which starts in January. It also gave us an opportunity, as mayors, to express the things that are important to us, which we told her that always our top priority has to do with public safety, but that we will be teeing up discussions on the SSUT, which has to do with internet sales tax and how it's being divided from a standpoint of trying to make sure that our state legislature understands some inequities that currently exist as to the detriment of the cities. Anyway, all in all, it was a great meeting, and it's always good to visit with other mayors. We actually, maybe Bob Hope may have mentioned this, but we took finance directors. So, all the finance directors from the cities were able to collaborate and exchange information. And again, it's just very, very helpful dealing with some of the challenges we deal with to be able to take best practices from those who may be further ahead of us in solving some of these challenges. Parks and Rec is going to be hosting an event Saturday, October 30th, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM at Medal of Honor Park. And there'll be a trail of treats, be family games, food trucks, music, zombie fun run at 4:00, and the Sugar Shaker Band from 6:00 to 9:00. Did I get it all right, Shonda? It's all right. You know, Shonda and her team really have done a great job with changing kind of the way we've approached entertainment and the opportunities for the citizens to engage at different parks. And I know that Mobtober, that is, Mobtober, will be something we can look forward to the years to come. So, thank you, Shonda and your team. Now, last week, we had, actually, we had three ribbon cuttings. I note say two, but it was three. One of them was MTC Logistics. That's the largest refrigeration, refrigerated warehouse on the Gulf Coast. It's one of the, the company that owns it is one of the ten largest refrigeration companies in North America. It's an amazing facility, but the family that's the primary owner of it, we're here from Baltimore, and they were very excited about being in Mobile and the business that they're going to be conducting. We also had the opportunity to join Chris Curry, who's in the audience, and Elliot Mazel and the MAA team cutting the ribbon on the runway that's just been rebuilt, a $10 million project, thanks to FAA and some matching funds from the MAA. But anyway, it's a big step in the right direction of relocating commercial air traffic to Brookly, but also it's to the benefit of ST Aerospace, or MAE as we know it, and also to Airbus to have a new runway like that. So, it's a big deal. And the other one had to do with the playground at Walsh Park. There were some companies, local companies, along with some outside companies that came in and raised $80,000 to build a playground at Walsh Park. And it's, one of the ladies that was there, her name is Ms. Lucky, she said, "Mayor, I've lived here for 50 years, and I know for at least 30, I've been trying to get a playground here." And so, needless to say, Mrs. Lucky was very, very excited, as were all the children. So, it was a great day in the city of Mobile when we did that. Now, today, we're looking forward to creating some of the synergy that we know is going to be created between Brookly and between the port, having to do with the relocation of commercial traffic to Brookly. And the council will be addressing the opportunity to earmark some of the capital surplus, excuse me, the general fund surplus to, is that thing biting y'all like it is me? Anyway, so, they will be addressing that issue, but it is an opportunity to, you know, build out the airport so that, there we go, thank you very much. So, ultimately, we'll have an international airport located right next to what was one of the top ten deepwater ports in America, and just think it's one of the best economic development things that we can invest in at this time. Last night, I knew that there were a group of travel writers here, these writers for the aviation and aerospace industry, and they were here to look at the A220 that's one of them's been, in the next couple of weeks, will be accepted by Breeze Airways. There are two Breeze planes out there, and Breeze is a relatively new airline company that was formed by David Neilman, and Mr. Neilman also started JetBlue. But he and his entire team were here, had a big gathering at Noj's last night in celebration of their excitement about accepting these two 20s. But so, yesterday, they had a micro parade going down Conti Street, and these were all the travel writers who were excited about what we're talking about doing in Mobile. And so, I was going to join in for the last 100 yards of the parade, which I did, and very fortunate that the leadership of Airbus was here also. But anyway, from Airbus standpoint, yesterday and today, actually, are really big days. We have all these travel writers for aviation in town critiquing what we're doing, and hopefully, they will have, they'll go away with a good impression of what we're doing there. So, that would conclude my remarks. Mr. Vice President?
Mr. Mayor, did you tell them to breeze their way to Mobile, Alabama?
Sir?
Did you tell them to breeze their way to Mobile, Alabama?
So, I got it. So, on no less than about 10 occasions, I think he understood it. And one thing that's really interesting, that his wife attended the University of South Alabama for a year.
My alma mater.
And so, anyway, that obviously was a segue into a lot of the conversation. So, he, they are all looking at it, and they were very, I think, pleased and surprised to see that we have a low-cost terminal, and they really were focusing on that. We had some poster boards where the function was going on. And so, we're very hopeful that MAA, Chris Curry and his team will continue to sell the reasons why Breeze should be here. One thing I left out, though, Mr. Vice President, is I do want to call on Chief Prynn right now to introduce the officer of the month.
As they come up, Mr. Mayor, also, you had mentioned last week that it was three ribbon cuttings within 24 hours, but those three ribbon cuttings happening in District Three.
There we go.
So, District Three is the place where things are happening. Right?
I think we've known that for a long time. Chief Prynn?
Mayor, staff, city council, today I have the privilege of introducing to you Mr. Radwan Habibi. He has demonstrated excellent performance for the month of September of 2021. He's assigned currently to the Fourth Precinct Squad One. Just a complete, interesting notes about Officer Habibi. He's got two children. He's been on the department for six years, and he is from Tunisia, North Africa. He speaks five languages and five dialects in Arabic. So, he's a very intelligent man, and we're glad to have him. September 3rd of this year, he responded to assist in a homicide investigation. As a result of that, we were able to arrest the individual responsible for it, as well as an assault first degree and two outstanding misdemeanor warrants. On September the 4th of this year, he helped in an investigation where he responded to a suspicious vehicle involved in a burglary, where subsequently, he was responsible for arresting three subjects that were involved in the burglary charges themselves. September the 6th of this year, Officer Habibi conducted several traffic stops where, one incident, he arrested a female driver that was found to be wanted in Covington County on two grand jury indictments for felonious assault charges and, of course, possession of controlled substance. And during this month of September, Officer Habibi responded to 110 calls, assisted with 49 complaints, made correction, five felony arrests, six misdemeanor arrests, and issued eight traffic citations. As a result of that, we are pleased to offer this certificate of recognition to Mr. Habibi for a job well done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
All right. It's a great day in Mobile, Alabama. It's my pleasure today to have a few guests here from the Richards DAR house. If y'all would join me, ladies, I would be honored to present you with this proclamation. We'll start off by facing the council. Fellow council members, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to present this proclamation, which reads, "Whereas sacrifice, sufferings, and grief are synonymous with war, the nations of family, friends, and citizens mourning the loss of their loved ones need closure in order to start their grieving process. They need a place that represents this loss and celebrates the service and sacrifices that protect the liberties of free nations. And whereas, on March 4th, 1921, President Wilson signed Public Resolution 67 of the 66th Congress, introduced by Congressman Hamilton Fish III, calling on the nation to return to the United States the body of an unknown American who was killed while serving in the American Expeditionary Forces in France, and bury his body with appropriate ceremonies in the tomb to be constructed on the Memorial Amphitheater in Arlington National Cemetery. And whereas, the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier was established November 11th, 1921, after the body of an unidentified service member killed in France during World War I was laid to eternal rest in the East Plaza of the Memorial Amphitheater. And whereas, the three crypts on the east side of the Memorial Amphitheater, just to the west of the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, contain the remains of unidentified Americans representing World War II and Korean War, with the empty crypt dedicated to the honoring and keeping faith with our nation's missing warriors. Whereas, the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier transcends race, creed, religion, politics, represent the final resting place for thousands of Gold Star family fallen loved ones who served this nation and made the ultimate sacrifice, given not only their lives, but also their identities, to protect our freedoms. And whereas, on November 11th, 2021, the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, a true national treasure, will celebrate its centennial and once again reaffirm its power to unite all Americans in honor of those who gave their life in defense of others. Now, therefore, I, John Williams, Councilman of District Four, along with the entire Mobile City Council, in recognition of the 100th anniversary of the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier and dedication of the Never Forgotten Garden Ceremony at the Richards DAR House in Mobile, Alabama, hereby declare November 13th, 2021 as Tomb of the Unknown Soldier Day in the city of Mobile, and encourage all of our citizens to join us in honoring our country's soldiers, past and present, on this day. On this day in the city of Mobile, sign John Williams, Councilman, District Four." and talk to us about what's going to happen on this day. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Sandra Racker, and I'm the chairwoman of this event, November the 13th, that we're going to hold at the Richards DAR House, 256 North Joakim Street. I'd like to introduce Patsy Hamilton, on my left, the board president, and Frances Stewart, a member of the board. On November the 13th at 2:00, several of you will receive invitations, and it is open to the public. We will hold a ceremony honoring the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier in the garden area. We are praying for good weather, so please pray with us about that. We're hoping we can have it outside. Also, we will dedicate a monument in our Never Forget Garden. The garden area is being redone by the Friends Foundation of the Richards DAR House. We just got new sod in. We've got a pergola going up. We're using ironwork from the city that was graciously given to us. Of course, the city owns the Richards house, so it's not going anywhere. We are just so honored. Our President General for the Daughters of the American Revolution is coming from Washington for the ceremony, and it's the first time that we've had the President General come to Mobile in recent years. Maybe back in the 20s, they might have come. But anyway, I just want to thank y'all so much, and thank you, Mr. Williams, for the proclamation and the city council.
Yeah, thank you for your dedication. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Vice President, if I could comment, I've prepared a statement that I would like to have read into the record.
Mr. Council Vice President, while it's a great day in Mobile, Alabama, this statement must be held over for seven days, per council rules, in order to increase transparency for our citizens.
Mr. Vice President, as one of the lone wolf crying in the wilderness, I will continue, because if you always do what you've always done, you'll always get what you've always got. With that said, I'd like to read a resolution on behalf of the city clerk's office in conjunction with councilmembers Small, Gregory, and Daves. Whereas today marks the last meeting of the three, for three of our most revered council members, and whereas, for 25 years, Councilman Fred Richardson served the citizens of District One; for 14 years, Councilman John Williams served the citizens of District Four; and for 19 years, Councilwoman Best Rich served the citizens of District Six. And whereas, as a direct result of their tenures, the city has seen District One, Four, and Six transform, especially with projects aimed at bettering daily life for their citizens, including the evolution of our Parks Department facilities from recreation to community centers, enabling us to serve our community at all stages of life, championing clean local waterways through installing litter traps in the Dog River watershed and a community-built playground express at Medal of Honor Park, recently replaced with a state-of-the-art playground and splash pad. And whereas, the contributions of these three council members also led to significant steps forward in increasing citizen participation and transparency through changes to the role of the city council person and rules for transacting city council business, including beginning the tradition of holding district meetings to provide opportunity for one-on-one connection with citizens, meetings being televised and now livestreamed on Internet and creating new council rules that truly provide the public an opportunity to review legislation put forward to increase transparency. And whereas, councilmembers Richardson, Williams, and Rich also regularly use their platforms to bring attention and awareness to important issues, including the need for all Mobileians to drop moon pies at midnight on New Year's Eve, youth sports throughout the city, which is so vital to the development of our young people, and the fight against childhood cancer, where our council has collaborated with many local organizations working to end it. And whereas, year after year, they graciously and selfishly gave their Joe Kane Day up to serve citizens by spending the day traveling the streets of Mobile on city floats, proving that here in Mobile, we truly were born to celebrate. Whereas, for these reasons and many, many more, their impact on their districts and the city will be felt for decades to come, as will the loss of them leaving, not just through shorter weekly meetings. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Mobile City Council, along with the office of the city clerk, do hereby urge everyone to join in, join us in honoring the service of these three champions of their districts in the city of Mobile, done at the city of Mobile, Alabama, this 26th day of October, 2021.
Oh, that's cute.
Madam Clerk, I would like to have a copy of that.
We have a copy for each of you.
Okay. Just go onto Facebook, just wanted to know.
Monthly finance reports?
Good morning, Mr. Vice President.
Good morning.
And Council. First of all, for the last several months since I've been here, I've been getting up here and reporting briefly on the financial results for the previous month. The last month, I haven't reported on September, and Septembers are closing for the end of the year, and it usually takes us quite a bit more time to reconcile the books, so I don't have the September numbers now. I think I mentioned last month that typically, we lose some money in September because of that, but we're getting ready for the audit, and as soon as I have those, I'll be reporting those out to you at that time. There is one thing I did want to talk to you a little bit about, though, and the mayor mentioned it briefly, was the SSUT, Simplified Sales Users Tax. And I think this has been discussed with you all in the past, but not so recently. We did meet with the vice presidents, or the directors of finance at the different cities, over the last couple of days to talk about it, and I just wanted to maybe explain to you why that's so important. You know, a lot of people don't think that internet sales have much of an impact on us, but they do. Internet sales in the U.S. have risen from about $285 billion in 2015 to about 500, well, to almost 500 billion this year. And what happens is, is when the state started to try and implement a process to collect some of that sales tax, they came up with a formula that was different than the typical tax formula that we use today. And the bottom line is, rather than the city getting 5%, we get 2.4%. And while the state continues to get their 4%, also, the county gets a little bit more than what they did before. But anyway, we've been talking about that, and we got together, and I think over the course of the next several months, we're going to be trying to put a strategy together to see what can be done about that, to make this a little more fair for the city. And, you know, it has to be brought up before the legislature. That may not happen this year, because we have a lot of homework to do, but we do want to get the process rolling to see if there's some things we can do to recoup some of that revenue. Because, just to point it out, our sales use tax this year, it's going to be about $9.5 million that we collect. If we only collect 50% of what we would normally collect, that's about $9.5 million less than what we would have collected had we sold that material here in the city. So, that's something we'll be working on and we'll be keeping you appraised of going forward. The only other thing I want to say is, I haven't been here that long, so I haven't really gotten the opportunity to know you all that long, so I'm a little bit better than others. But for those of you who are retiring, I just want to congratulate you, thank you for your service, and all the best to you, and the best of luck to you in your, maybe your first retirement, or your second retirement, or maybe your third. Whatever it is, good luck to all of you.
Thank you. If I could just comment, and just thank you for your efforts into the future of looking at how we could level the playing field with the internet taxes and not seeing it go to the state or to even the county to rebate to us, because the activity is actually happening in our city limits. We can track that, and we have to send the police and the firefighter and the sanitation worker and the person who repairs drainage to that individual. So, we have to provide those services. That's really the argument, is that it is happening within here.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if we don't have the funds, we can't produce the services that they require.
And I think there's a consensus among all the different cities that that's the case.
I bet the bigger ones, for sure. Yeah. Thank you, and thanks for your well wishes.
Thank you.
Adoption of the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Been properly moved in second, in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Madam Clerk?
Appeals. We have appeal of Rashawn figures concerning the ARB denial of his request to replace windows and doors and install a mural at 809 Government Street.
Move delay over one week.
Second?
Been properly moved in second, in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
We have request for wave of the noise ordinance on February 27th, from 6:00 PM until 6:00 AM on Dolphin Street. June 25th, from 12:00 PM until 6:00 PM. This is on Texas Street. October 29th and 30th, from 6:00 PM until 10:00 PM on Montauk Avenue. And on November 6th, from 6:00 PM until 10:00 PM on Windover Road.
So moved.
Second?
Been properly moved in second, in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Appeal passes.
Public hearings, it is, a public hearing to rezon property located at 2551 Casso Street, southwest corner of South Florida Street and Casso Street, from R1 to B1.
This opened up the public hearing for the rezoning of this particular property. If anyone in the audience would like to come down and address the council, if so, we ask you that you give your name and your address. If not... If not, this public hearing is closed.
Today is the public hearing to fix the cost for demolition of structures at 1723 Bolden Street, 2309 Bullen Street, 2803 College Street, 1618 Bryan Avenue, 907 Opal Avenue, 322 Lexington Avenue, 1057 Sutton Avenue, and 1004 Alba Street, and 2304 Burma Hills Court. Today is also the public hearing to declare the structures at 1003 A Baltimore Street, 1000 B Baltimore Street, and 705 Pettit Avenue, 2302 Roosevelt Avenue, public nuisances and ordering those demolished.
This opened up the public hearing for the cost of the, the cost of demolition and also declaring the structures nuisance. Is anyone present in the ordinance that would like to come down and address the council? If so, come down, please give your name and your address.
Oh, my name is George Wilson. My address is 1110 Oakdale Avenue, Mobile, Alabama. And I have a piece of property on Opel Avenue, 901. She said 907.
You said, what's your address again? You coming down about?
Oh, 1110.
Oh, okay, 907.
Yeah, yeah, she said 901.
Okay.
My address 901, know where the property was towed out.
That's on Opel Avenue, correct?
Yes, sir.
So, it's not 907, it's 901?
Yes, sir.
We need to make that correction, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Well, you got here, you want to, I propose of paying 200, $2,700? I don't have no money like that. If I had money, I would have fixed the house up, you know what I mean? And I do pay the taxes on it.
Yes, sir.
And try to keep the grass cut down.
Yes, sir.
But now you just towed the property down, now I ain't got nothing but the land. I just try to keep the grass cut on that, but $2,700, I don't have that.
Yes, sir.
Can you waiver that and just let me keep the property up? Try to keep the grass cut anyway, you know, I ain't got nothing on the land now. If I had money, I'd have fixed it up, you know what I mean? This ain't my question, doubt it, but just ain't able to do it. Don't have, have no finance, nothing but to fix it.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, do understand, and pretty much, if, you know, don't pay it, the city pretty much is going to put a lien on your piece of property until, you know, it get paid or until you sell the piece of property and et cetera. I think Mr. David Dockelbaum, which is on top, he can pretty much go into detail why it costs that, that pretty much, that amount of money and everything. So, you have any additional questions, you can also contact Mr. Dockelbaum, which is on the top there.
Where is he?
Right down, very top.
Well, he can make some arrangements with me?
Pretty much, he can tell you the proper necessary steps that you can go ahead and take, but if you don't pay it, like I say, the city will put liens on the property. Okay? Thank you so much.
So, Mr. Small?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to make, want a clarification to the speaker that he doesn't, he doesn't, as you mentioned, there's a lien to the property, but we don't, we don't go after them for payment, we just put the lien on there, so he doesn't have to make an active payment to the city until he sells the property, as you said.
Yes, sir, thank you. Is anyone else present in the ordinance would like to come down and speak on any of these If not?
Good morning, everyone. Sabrina Mas, 1050 Beverlydale Circle West, Mobile, Alabama, 36606. Now, I very rarely speak on these issues, I really don't. I'm just, I just have a question, if I may.
Ms. Mas, you had to speak on one of these properties.
That's what I was going to say.
Which property?
The gentleman that just spoke.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't know if it, I want to speak in reference to his property. I don't know him, but I want to speak in reference to his property and just have a question that I want to know. So, when people, as this gentleman, come forward with these issues, when they, when we talk about community improvement funds or neighborhood improvement funds, does that not help citizens in their communities that may not can afford these things? Are there any programs that can help them so that they won't lose their properties? That's just really what I want, want to know about the community improvement and development, because I see we have so many citizens, especially our elderly citizens, is there not something that the city of Mobile can help them as far as programs or some kind of help to the citizens so they won't lose their properties that may have been in their generational families for years? I'm just concerned about that.
Yeah, we have a department, Mr. Jamie Roberts, and that particular property is District Two, and when the Reverend Manzi was here, I'm sure Mr. Manzi had several community meetings where he invited, you know, Mr. Roberts and his department, just as well, District Three, and some other districts around here also, that has different, that the city do have different programs that do offer citizens and everything.
Would that program help this elderly gentleman here?
Again, it's several programs, that's, that's, I can't name all the programs that's been out throughout the years.
How can I, as Sabrina Mas, help him to get in contact with?
And next time you get a call from District Three, say, "Community meeting," show up and spread the word.
Is he in District Three?
No, again, he's in District Two. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there someone on the administration that can?
Ms. Mas, you can only address me, yeah.
Oh, well, Ricardo?
Yeah, they want to respond, they can, yeah.
I was just going to say, Mr. Roberts, Jamie Roberts, who's over that program, will be happy to talk to Ms. Mas.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else present in the ordinance that would like to speak on these public hearings? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Eddie Erby.
Morning. My name is Eddie Erby, 1116 Richard Road, 36618. And now that we have the mayor here, I just have a concern about a property we've been trying to get taken care of for three and a half years. Yesterday, well, over the weekend, I was called to Central Nell to go and check on the gentleman that just joined our group that's 99 years old. When I came back, I came down to Moffett Court side instead of the Gene Drive side to my house, and I noticed the property at 3919 Moffett Court supposed to have been cleaned off, that have an SRO number and everything on, I call it every six months. Well, whoever went in there and cleaned it off, basically robbed the city because they didn't do what they're supposed to do. All the shrubs, the trees and everything else that's on the sidewalk is still there. They cleaned off the street side, but that's about it. So, I don't know if it was the city's doing, it wasn't anybody in our community, because I'm in touch with everybody in the community, so if 311 paid or the city paid somebody to clean that property off, they were robbed because they did not do what it's supposed to do. I have another SRO number, which is 124, 12445. Did I call in at 4:45 yesterday afternoon and took the lady, she was very kind to take it all over again, I said, "You need to send somebody back out there, or send somebody from the city to make sure that this property is cleaned up like it's supposed to be." Other than that, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, thank you so much, Mr. Erby, and that's a, this is a complaint that I get all the time, and where, matter of fact, I got one yesterday in Guffdale, and was speaking about, I guess, the different, maybe contractors or the city may go out and cut grass, but don't weed eat, you know, edge up the grass and et cetera. I guess this question is to the administration, I mean, once that the city hires these contractors, do anybody go behind the contractors and check to make sure that they're cutting the grass properly, et cetera?
For our grass cutting contracts, yes. I think, though, what we're talking about here is, is a property that, that had a demolition and something else, is that correct?
No, it was not, the homes were demolished about eight, nine years ago.
Right.
Because the family moved the lady to Houston, and prior to 2019, the city always came in and cleaned, I guess they put a lien on the property, cleaned it off like it's supposed to be cleaned, nothing was left. Whoever went to clean it off this time must have taken a weed eater, a push mower to went in and cleaned it off, because they just did a little something and then they left.
Yeah. I'll have to, between municipal enforcement and public works, we'll have to see where that lies to follow up. But on our large mowing contracts, and we have about 10 or so, yes, we do have folks who go out and check the quality of those, those are the, you know, they have specific areas of the city that they do. I'll have to look at this specific one to find out.
Do they also go back, like the council, you know, declare different properties with weed liens? Do anybody from the city go back and double check to make sure that those contractors did everything like they should have done, to make sure that the yard is presentable?
Yeah, yeah. That's what I was going to say, is I'll let David speak to that, that's in his court.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Vice President, yes, municipal enforcement is responsible for administering the weed abatement program, and this location is currently in an active weed abatement, which the contractor is currently working. And yes, Mr. Erby, he's not finished yet. And I do apologize to everybody, because the contractor experienced some equipment failure, and that's why we're delayed on this particular group from completing the whole group, which includes this Moffett Court. He is currently working onsite today, and we expect him to finish tomorrow. However, before he receive, we receive an invoice with documentation that we do verify that all the grass is cut and all the debris is removed, based upon the invoice being submitted. So, yes, we do follow up.
All right, thank you so much.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Gregory.
Just a follow-up question. Thank you, Mr. Erby, for coming, I'm glad they're taking care of that for you, but I think there's a difference between lots where the homes have been demolished and there's a lien on the property and how the city keeps that up, as opposed to lots that are considered vacant and natural, because we get a lot of calls about these vacant lots and people want us to keep these lots up, but I believe the city policy is that if it's a grown-up natural lot, we don't maintain those. Now, sometimes somebody will come along and cut the right of way, but if you could explain the difference of why we keep up these lots where the homes are demolished versus one that is deemed vacant and natural, and what we, what we do or don't do?
And as you're coming down, if it's okay, could he also tell us how many years the city keeps coming back until something?
Because this one's been like nine years, that's a long time for the city to be.
That's why I'm very curious about that.
And, and yes, the council, they do see these type of lots in their district, and they do reoccur. This particular lot is tax delinquent, and it will be a reoccurring issue that we will see and revisit in the future until somebody takes interest for redevelopment purposes. Ms. Gregory, the, the difference is, a naturally wooded lot, it's not able to be cut. We've got trees, shrubs, it's just not something that we're going to go in and clear, whereas the city ordinance requires that we maintain property at 10 inches or below with grass and weeds. So, in this particular property, it's not wooded, it's highly overgrown with grass and weeds, in fact, regretfully, it got up to our shoulder before we could get to it.
But vacant lots remain vacant, but do we require then the right of way to be cut?
Yes, the right of way would be cut on this location.
On a vacant lot? That's, that's a natural lot? Natural wooded lot, do we require right of way to be cut?
That I would really defer to the Public Works Department, because if it's a wooded lot, I would not initiate a weed abatement action. But if it falls under the weed abatement action, yes, the contractor that is assigned the group to cut does cut the right of way. And I do want to point out, if there's one exemption in our ordinance, that if the lot is greater than five acres, then all we would have cut is the first, the right of way and going into the first 20, 25 feet. The rest of it would be able to grow back into its natural state over time. That's the only exception. Five acres or more.
And what's the longest you've kept going out to your knowledge, or the system has in the knowledge of? How many years?
That's a good question. As long as it's tax delinquent and it's in a code violation, we would process it as we, we receive notice from the public. So, it could be ongoing until it's redevelopment.
Is the land ever offered to the neighbors to take over and expand their property lines?
There are some redevelopment programs that are through the Neighborhood Development with Jamie Roberts, and yes, some of them do end up going through the NRP program, and some of them end up as a side lot program for the adjacent side lot owners. That is something that is possible. I do recommend that they communicate with the Neighborhood Development Department for that purpose.
Maybe that word needs to come out.
Chief Barber?
Yeah, we have noticed, to y'all's point here, on lots that are below five acres, and it came to my attention earlier in the year, that there are some lots that have been cleared off in floodplains, there's no intent by the property owners or desire to ever rebuild those properties because of the floodplain, and we do not have a process within the city of how to return that back to a natural state. And so, we also have floodplain property in the city that we are cutting and maintaining in perpetuity. And so, again, the idea of how do we take this property and transition it into a natural state, and we're working on that. So, we do realize that we have an issue in certain, on how to do this properly, rather than deal with five acres, that these smaller parcels that we ought to be able to return that are not going to be developed.
Anything else from the council? All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
John Hilliard.
John Hilliard, Mobile Sports and Entertainment Group, 755 Bowling Brothers Boulevard, mayor and city council. I wanted to take this last opportunity to address and thank the outgoing city council for all its hard work, dedication, and sacrifice. You will be missed. You not always agreed with each other, but you were honest and upfront. Your yays were yay, your nays were nay. People knew where you stood, and I admire that most of all. You had character and backbone, and did not back down for what you believed. I come to these meetings as much as I can to find out what's going on in the city, to let you know what's going on at the HANK. I often hear people talk about what is needed, why people come to Mobile, and why they leave. For us to keep people here, bring people here, and move the city forward, we must continue to provide them with what they truly need, work, education, healthcare, arts, entertainment, music, sports, to name a few, and facilities for these things to take place. This comes at a price, but they are a necessity and must be provided and defended at all cost. We will continue the majority rule and some of the Christmas lights and lights to follow. Every year, nearly 120,000 people come to see the show. Since the city has a population of about 190,000, that is over 60%. It brings close to $100,000 in taxable income to the city, not only to mention the number of charities it helps. Without the HANK, this would not be possible. We are doing everything we can for the HANK and have many plans for its future. We are working on bringing the Savannah Bananas back. It was one of the most attended and liked events in the stadium's history. We continue to work with Danny Cordy and the Mobile Sports Authority to bring more events to the HANK. Thank you.
If I could comment?
Yes, Ms. Rich.
Thank you. Thank you, John, so much, and if I could just add, when you were lobbying to take over the contract for Lad, and you pledged that you would never come back to the city to ask for anything, I want to say you honored that, and I know people who have utilized your facility and enjoyed the activities, they are most appreciative. So, thanks and much success to you in the future.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, Mr.
I'd like to make a comment. You know, in the eight years that this administration has been serving, I would say that John and his group, the Mobile Sports Entertainment Group, have gone above and beyond every expectation we had to do exactly what was required within the contractual agreement that we had. It's unfortunate that we not, have not been able to work out the details of continuing that contract, but it certainly has nothing to do with their performance, because we are tremendously grateful for everything that y'all have done, and if there's a way to find that pathway forward, we'll find it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor? I don't know what you can elaborate on, but I remember when the council was voting on building the stadium, one of my reasons for a no vote was because of it not being owned by the city, but leased, but I was assured, and the minutes might reflect, that a 99-year lease was the same as ownership. a 99-year lease was the same as ownership.
Let Ricardo answer that.
So the short answer is yes, for municipal purposes, that's how it gets treated. But people can differ on that.
Good luck to you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And I want to join with you and express my thanks for the councilors from Districts One, Four, and Six. But a little differently, I would urge you not to clean out your offices so quick. I think you'll be here a little while longer than anticipated. Orbin Woodward once said, "Leaders always choose the harder right rather than the easier wrong." But what are we doing here in Mobile? Mr. Vice President, members of the council, Mayor Stimson, always good to see you here doing public comments to the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile. Good morning, Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street. I was today to speak on the disconnect between city leadership and citizens and how these acts contribute to poor education, zoning irregularities, and high volumes of census crime. Oftentimes, the city points to the school system regarding youth matters, but many of these schools are within city limits. And we saw today where the city handled payroll for an agency which works directly with young people. While I'm appreciative of the efforts made by Director Smith, parks and wrecks are still light-years behind where we could be if our leaders were better in touch with the needs of the community. We must allow data-proven initiatives to be fully supported. You all are stewards of taxpayer resources, not dictators of taxpayer resources. There's an extreme difference. Interestingly enough, the councilors with Rich in their names were the only advocates for the less affluent last week when it came to the UDC coming before this body. While there is still no certainty on the schematics the current administration will attempt next, it was great to see after public testimony that the mayor would draw his sponsorship of a faulty agenda item. Regarding high volumes of census crime, I want to reference the definition of "upfitting," installing features on an existing vehicle to help the driver do their job better and more efficiently. So before I make my remarks, I want to remind this body, when police raises came before this council, there was one citizen who was not affiliated with the city of Mobile who spoke on behalf of the raisers. So this is not anything against MPD, this is against the practices of the administration. We see where we would rather spend $232,980, that's 08962, on MPD vehicles than invest in data-proven programs that would actually eradicate juvenile delinquency. We also see we'd rather spend $30 million, which I'm still confused about, from an unassigned fund balance on an airport, rather than allocating just $1 million towards data-proven programs that would actually eradicate juvenile delinquency. I'll just, I'll close with this. The good scripture tells us that as we dig pits for others, they in time become pits for ourselves. So as long as we are continuously moving in a manner that is not bringing all people to the table, we are never gonna see the unity and the peace within the city that I believe we all want and that we all deserve. We are entrusted here to do a due diligence job for the people. The people must come first, not ideological justifications or the advancement of our own agenda with the resources. Thank you for yielding the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Madam Clerk?
Gregory Dennis, regarding Resolution 60997, Hillsdale Heights.
Good morning. My name is Gregory Dennis. I live at 5919 Wormwood Drive. I'm a resident of Hillsdale Heights, and I object to the city giving the so-called Hillsdale Heights Homeowners Association $12,000 because the board members of said organization are not residents and are homeowners of Hillsdale Heights. The residents of Hillsdale Heights, because the members of the said organizations are not residents of Hillsdale Heights and are, and don't own any property in Hillsdale Heights, the residents have chosen not to support this group and is not a member of said organization. Those of us who are residents of and homeowners of Hillsdale Heights wants the city to stop falsifying records, closing SROs for Hillsdale Heights without the work being completed. We want the mayor and District Seven councilwoman to use any available funds to repair the infrastructure and damaged drainage system that has been willfully and intentionally destroyed. 311 is the only means the citizens of Mobile have to communicate their needs. The city closing out the SROs as soon as they are put in without the work being done is unacceptable. The mayor and his administration and District Seven councilwomen may not understand, but their actions are more dangerous to the residents of Hillsdale Heights than any criminal they have been.
Stay with the agenda item, Mr. About the $12,000.
Based on the facts, their actions threaten the existence of our home.
Mr. Mr.
Okay, I'm going back there.
Stick with your item.
Yes, sir. The city has refused to provide copies of work orders that they have closed out concerning SROs. So what I'm asking you all to do is create a room where the city of Mobile closes out no SROs until the work is done. Falsifying reports is unacceptable. I understand your position, Mr. Small, and I know that you're protecting Ms. Gregory. And you didn't say nothing, nobody else. You have a good day.
But- Mr. Chair, Mr. Dennis, you were here to speak on a specific item. And the Homeowners Association does request funds. They have requested funds before that we have given. These funds on the agenda today are for lights at the entrance to Fontaine Drive. We gave them funds last year for lights at the entrance to LaFlore. Mr. Dennis? We can escort you out of the building fairly easily. So when the Homeowners Association requests funds, I like to work with them to make this happen. I believe that lights are a good reason to spend the money. Obviously, it protects, it provides safety for the residents there. The Homeowners Association, some of them may, one in particular, may not actually live in the neighborhood, but he owns property. And so he qualifies as far as I know. Mr. Dennis is not currently a member of the HOA.
Madam Clerk?
Nathan Friedlander, regarding Resolution 40915.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Nathan Friedlander, 126 Government Street, Mobile, Alabama, 36602. I'm an attorney in Mobile. I'm here on behalf of Malick Holdings LLC. Malick Holdings LLC, just to be clear, was not a party that was engaged in any of the activity that was discussed in the pre-council hearing about this property that's on the agenda. The, there was some discussion, there had been some drug activity and everything. Malick purchased the property at a foreclosure sale on May 20, 2021 for a price of $145,000. Malick did that because it's engaged in acquiring and improving the housing stock in the city of Mobile, which is something that we badly need people like Malick to keep up our housing stock. And again, they purchased property for $145,000, which was $8,155.90 over the amount of the debt that was owed to the SBA, who was the lien holder. Those funds on October 22, 2021, were interpled into the district court here in Mobile County in the sum of $8,155.90. And the city is named as a defendant in that lawsuit. That's the excess bid over the foreclosure that we believe the city would be entitled to as a lien holder on the property that could go towards paying the demolition assessment that's being considered today. So we think that there's a fund there over in the district court that can make the city either whole or partially whole and create a win-win situation for both my client and us. And I discussed that with Mr. Woods. And we're trying to come up with a vehicle by which we can secure those funds to pay for the lien and assessment that the council is considering today. And I just wanted to make you aware of that. The only other thing is, in the pre-council meeting, there was discussion about an opportunity to review the expenditures the city made. We'd also like the opportunity to review that expenditure. When you look at all the different demolition liens that have been assessed against properties today, the amount that's being considered to be assessed against this property is a significantly higher amount than what it would have cost to demolish the property. And we'd like a chance to review that and take that into consideration and perhaps address that as part of any settlement over the assessment that the city makes.
Mr. Woods, you'd like to respond on that?
I have talked to, thank you, Mr. Vice President, I have talked to Mr. Friedlander. What we'd ask is, is that Mr. Williams said before, as you all, go ahead and fix the cost, and then we'll move forward with the action that's in district court to try to recover the funds for the city, not directly from them, but from the court. And the second part of it is, we have no problem providing them with the scope of work and the work that's been done, because it's done by open bid, so it's public.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Small?
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Thank you for coming down here today. The request was for a breakdown of the cost. I did not receive that. The scope of work just simply does not answer the question of what, and anyone that's asked the question, and representative especially asking this question, should get a breakdown of the cost. And I would recommend to the council, we don't fix the cost. The administration was not able to, or maybe has chosen not to, provide a breakdown of the cost. I mean, before we pay a bill, we ought to know that exactly what work was done. So it costs maybe $2,000 to fix the eve, you know, $300 to mow the grass, $5,000 to clean it up with a bulldozer. I think that would probably be a simple thing to provide before we fix the cost on properties that are questioned. In this case, we've been questioned, and I just, if we can come up with it before the vote, I would recommend the council vote. But if not, I would say that we pass this on to the new council.
I have a question of our attorney.
Ms. Rich.
And thank you, Councilman Williams. I agree with you. I don't know what it means once we do affix the cost, whether the administration has wiggle room to not necessarily, after they review all files and sit with the representative, from looking at this cost, whether there could be any changes, or once we say that's exactly what they have to charge? Can you give us an understanding of that?
Well, I'm assuming that that, the $10,000 figure is, they think that's right, or they wouldn't have submitted it. So if, once you fix it, that's it.
They can't, they can't get, there would be no negotiation.
They could probably negotiate a different deal during the midst of the law.
So they're allowed to do that. So can we say "up to"? Like in other words, that there would be, like we are knowledgeable of flexibility?
So, yes, so here's, Mr. Aldous is correct. So this is a lump-sum bid. And I just want to go through how the process works because I'm not sure everybody is on the same page. So when we get ready to demo these properties, we issue lump-sum bids for each property, and we sometimes package them together. The scope of work is set out. We don't ask them for a breakdown on these costs. We don't ask the contractor. We say, "These are the, these are the different things you're gonna do." And that subcontractor, that contractor comes in and says, "For all of this work, this is what it will take." And because it's a bid, because it is a required bid, that's how they do it. We tell them what the scope of work is, and then they do the work. Lump-sum. There's no individual breakdown for cutting the grass and things of that sort. We just take the lowest bid, which we're forced to by law. If we don't fix the cost, which we've already paid this money, then you don't have any leverage to get it. And Mr. Aldous said last week, the fact that there was a foreclosure has nothing to do with us, nothing to do with the city. There was a less spendance that was put there. All they had to do was go and look at it. Nobody did that. We understand. Once again, has nothing to do with the city. So what you're saying is, if we want the city to be able to recover these funds, then you fix the cost. If you want to tie one hand behind our back, don't fix them.
Here's another question, and I guess this goes to Mr. Friedlander, if I may.
Ms. Rich, and Mr. Williams, then Mr. Day.
The amount, I think you quoted like 8,000-something that's sitting in the court because you, the owner bid over what the mortgage company was requesting, is that?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I understand that? So what normally happens to that funding source?
The, the court makes a determination as to any subordinate or other lien holders or the original owners, the debtor on the mortgage, as to who receives those funds.
I see. Okay. So is that basically just a court-type of process? But you're saying, because I thought you said that you thought the city could step up and get those funds?
Yes, the city's named as a defendant in the lawsuit along with the original mortgage debtors. So, and we think that legally, the city, because it has this lien, would be entitled to step in and get those funds before the original debtor would be entitled.
But I can't get the lien unless you fix the cost.
The only thing I would say to that, I mean, we want to see the city get reimbursed a fair amount for the funds that were expended. I'm not sure that just because the list pendence was filed, that the foreclosure purchaser would know how much they were dealing with when they went in to bid at the foreclosure sale. I'm not sure about that at all. And in fact, that's kind of what we're here talking about today. So it's not just that they know that there's a list pendence, it doesn't tell them, "This is what your final investment is gonna be." And that's-
So it's kind of circumstantial because a new owner came in and the city wasn't aware-
That is correct. And Mr. Friedlander is correct by saying he wouldn't know the amount because the amount's not set yet because you haven't fixed the cost. What happened here was simultaneously, you had the work occurring, and you had a list spendance pending, and then they went in and bought the foreclosure. So they would have known that the list spendance was there, but not the cost. In order for me to go into court and ask for the city's money back, you have to have the lien, meaning you all have to fix it at some point. I can't, I can't go into the court and say, "Well, we spent this, but my council hasn't fixed the cost yet," because you can't attach until you do that. That's the due process part of what we're dealing with here. And we can work with them all, and you can say "up to."
I think "up to" might be welcome.
But we need to be able to have you all make a fixed cost to tell the court what the amount owed to the city is.
Mr. Days?
Thank you. The list pendence was a matter of record. Is that correct?
Yes.
If they had gone in and examined the record before they went to the sale, they would have seen the list pendence. Is that correct?
Correct.
It would have been up to them to determine what the amount, which was undetermined at that point. But they would have known the list pendence was-
Correct.
So then, I want to remind my colleagues, we've received the scope of work that was submitted to everybody. Now, Mr. Dolphin Ball, how many people bid on this?
Six, he said.
Six contractors.
Okay, so the six, so this scope of work was sent out that included all the work. It wasn't, it was, it was for a scope of work that included all of these things. They weren't itemized because we wanted, what we wanted was someone to come in and do all the work, take the contract to do all the work, not this piece, this piece, this piece, this piece. We wanted someone to do all the work. Everyone got it. There were six bidders. The outfit that got the business was the lowest bidder. So there can't be, there can't be any possible uncertainty that the price was right, because we got six bidders, this was the lowest price. It can't be itemized. It was a matter of public record. I really don't see any reason to delay with respect to this.
One more question.
Uh, yeah, Ms. Rich.
When the administration gets a bid, is it just for that property or- When the administration gets a bid, is it just for that property, or does, do you list a number of properties for a contractor to bid on?
It's both and. Sometimes they're bundled, but it is for this specific property. So, you may put three, but you have to bid for all of those.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Mr. Vice President, if we're gonna make an exception in this instance, how do we refuse to make an exception the next time someone comes down and the next time someone comes down? There has to be a uniform process by which these things are done. I'm satisfied this was part of that uniform process.
Mr. Small. Yeah, Ms. Aldridge.
As opposed to saying "up to X amount," you know, the cost of the cost, they've written a check to the contractor for this amount. I would propose you fix the amount, and then either additionally authorize the administration in the court case to settle it within whatever means they think are necessary up to that amount, as opposed to making the fixing kind of a nebulous amount. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Anything else from the council?
If I may, Chairman.
I don't know.
Yeah, anything else from the council? Yeah, I think your time has expired. Mr. Williams.
Haven't listened to all of it. I mean, I certainly understand. I know I'd be frustrated if I was on the other side, recognize this was an administrative securing. And it kind of gets me back to, I wish the language was a little bit different. I'm not exactly ready to vote on an amendment that's being presented by my colleague, Mr. Richardson. But I think it has merit, and it probably ought to, I'd like to see Mr. Richardson's amendment go, or, yeah, amendment go to committee and include the security, and talk a little bit more about it, because right now, what we have is something that the council was not aware of, and maybe if they had been made aware, we wouldn't be in a place where we are right now. Having said all that, I'm gonna support the fixing of the cost. The costs are what they are, and I just hope we can avoid this in the future somehow with timeliness, and maybe a notice to the court that when there is a list and there's a crossing of the roads like we have right now, that somehow maybe there's a delay or some kind of information that's provided before the purchase is final. But that's not our business. Our business is just simply fix the cost, and I wasn't asking for an exception, Mr. Days, just, if I was on that other side of that podium, I'd be asking the same question.
Sure. I have no objection to their asking for it. Doesn't mean I have to agree with it.
Anything else from the council?
Yeah.
Yeah, did you sign up? Did he sign up?
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, council rules, yeah. It's council rules. I apologize, yeah. All right, thank you all so much and everything.
Yes, sir, thank you.
But it's a public hearing.
Is it, is this a public?
Yeah, it was a public.
No, 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 no.
Oh, it's held over, never mind. I got it.
Okay.
If we have anybody else sign up, Madam Clerk?
No, that's all.
That's it?
Yes.
Let me ask a question.
(inaudible).
No. Mr., he made me forget. Chris, did you have a presentation from the airport, or not? Just yes or no?
No.
Okay, all right, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Ordinance is held over 52034, ordinance to amend Section 52-31A of the City Code regarding emergency action in the abatement of unsafe buildings.
Yeah, I'm a move to, you know, get this signed to a committee. If somebody wants this, so we just probably just go ahead and just lay this over for...
It ought to be public service. It should go to public service.
Don't look at me, I won't be here.
But no, but it ought to go to public service.
We'll sign this over to a committee, and probably just, I mean, that we lay this over for one month. Been properly moved in second in the discussion.
What's the motion?
We'll lay this over for one month, 30 days.
You might want to do two months, because you got a new council.
Yeah, why don't we make it two months, CJ? That way...
I amend my motion, and let's make it, go ahead and make it two months.
Second.
Been properly moved in second in the discussion, Mr. Richardson?
No.
And other council members? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Interposed?
No.
All right, motion, it passes.
Don't put him on the committee.
Consent resolution's held over 40683, declare the structure at 1354 O'Shea Road a public nuisance in order it demolished.
Move to table.
Second.
Been properly moved in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? Pass.
4915, fix the cost for the demolition of the structure at 962 High Point Drive West.
Second.
Been properly moved in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? Resolution's passed.
Resolution's held over 01922. Are there objections to any of these?
Yeah, well, we need to take some of them. We're gonna amend 01922 and 09927.
Okay.
Right.
01922, authorize project agreement with Mobile County and Ossil USA.
Mr. Vice President?
Mr. Days.
I move to amend the item to substitute, therefore, substitute for the original contract, the updated version.
Second.
Been properly moved in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? Motion's passed.
07923, approve the issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds.
Wait, wait, we didn't vote on the...
Oh, they didn't? Oh, okay.
We just voted on the amendment.
Okay, I'm sorry. As amended, yeah.
Okay, gonna get a second?
Second.
Okay. All right, been properly moved in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? Resolution's passed.
That's my fault. I guess I made the amendment before we brought it up. Try not to do it next time.
07923, approve the issuance of multifamily housing revenue bonds by the Public Finance Authority in an amount not to exceed 55 million. 08924, approve purchase order to links for annual drive cam subscription for cameras for the motor pool. 08925, approve purchase order to Five Cast for intelligence software annual subscription for the police cyber division. 08926, approve purchase order to Galls for 82 body armor protective vest for Mobile Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? Resolution's passed.
09927, transfer 30 million from the unassigned fund balance in the general fund to Capital Improvements Fund, Capital Project CO677.
Is this the one we're gonna...
Yeah, no, but we gotta put it on. So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved in second in the discussion.
Yes, sir, I have an amendment to offer.
Mr. Days.
I move that, that the, that we substitute the revised version of this item, that we substitute the revised version for the original version.
Second.
All right, been properly moved in second in the discussion.
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Rich.
Can the administration elaborate on what is Capital Project CO677?
I believe that's the amendment, is so it identifies that project as the Mobile Aeroplex project.
That's what I want you to hear. All right.
In other discussion, I personally would like to say, you know, this is a lot of money, but you have to spend money to make money. And we was fortunate enough to, well, I was fortunate enough to take a trip over to Lafayette and just see how the citizens there get involved into their airport. They actually had a raised sales tax, so, I think, for like eight months, in order to, you know, fund their airport, with really not having any debt. And the citizens really had just took part in it, and they really loved the airport. And again, it didn't come from no airport authority, this actually came from citizens I actually talked to. And I really believe that this is going to be a deal breaker for the city of Mobile, that not only that, you know, this is gonna help to fund the airport, but also bring in low-cost airlines such as, you know, Breeze and, you know, other companies, and to make us be more competitive to, you know, other airports such as Pensacola and also New Orleans. Planning on having a district meeting sometime, you know, in the beginning of the year, going to invite the Airport Authority out, and questions that the citizens, you know, do have, especially in District 3, we're gonna have a meeting sometime after the first of the year. But I think this is a great move. This here is really to help to bring in more industries, more, make our airport an international airport. Right now, we regional. This is really to help us to make us international. And with all the progress that we've got going on in the city of Mobile, we need an international airport, and also an airport that helps to bring in low fares, that, you know, we can have more direct flights to certain cities besides just Atlanta and Houston and Dallas and Charlotte. But again, I do thank the administration for bringing this up forth. Again, this is a lot of money, but the return of this is gonna be much greater than what we're moving on today.
If I could comment?
Ms. Rich.
Thank you. Many years ago, I had a gentleman approach my office about having the airport at Brookley, because he had actually been in Washington at the same time, talking to military people about what to do with Brookley. That's how far back it goes. And he had envisioned the city's airport being at Brookley, where it really does belong for numerous reasons. Today, for I-10 and I-65 at the crossroads, I mean, you cannot compete with that with any city to have an airport right there. And of course, we are manufacturing planes today. That wasn't even, well, no, that was probably talked about in this gentleman's day and age, but commercial airplanes being made right on the same site. It's beautiful. I hope we get a train station there someday, busing to come and go from the same area, and our bridge expanded so that we can commute people back and forth appropriately for them catching their flights, and the cruise industry rolling back into town, and people just hopping off the airplane and getting right on to the cruise ship. Wouldn't that be ideal? We have all the pieces, parts are there, and I know that it is the right decision to make. I am extremely pleased to be a part of that, and also the fact that the Mobile Airport Authority has researched it and figured it out, and we're on the road to really making a difference in our city, as Councilman Small already pointed out. And I wish you the best and the most success in the future.
And other council members?
Yes, Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson?
When Brookfield Field was in its heydays, it was the second largest air material base in the United States. And then, they closed down, but the infrastructure was left, the runways that they used for those jet airplanes. The runway was left there. So consequently, when I came on in 1997, it was conversation about the airport, moving an airport to Brookly, that Brookly would be the ideal place. But it wasn't until Chris Curry, the current director of the Airport Authority, came on board, that this idea came into fruition. We are indebted to Chris Curry and the board of the Airport Authority for taking this mission on and transforming ideas into reality. And what we are doing today, it's gonna take, I can't even write, I think, is it more than 300 million to build an airport?
245, I thought they said, million, 250? Okay.
Counsel, Rich, the first phase is 250 days.
Okay, the first phase. But some of that money's coming from the federal government, they're getting it from various sources. We can't sit here and not contribute. So, we are making, this is our contribution toward building a new airport, and we're talking about in the near distant future. We're not talking about in somebody else's lifetime. We're talking about building this in the next two, three years. So, I wholeheartedly support this, and I'm glad that I have this opportunity to vote on this, so when the airport is built, I can say, "I had a hand, I played a role, I voted to provide funding for this magnificent airport." Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Gregory.
Thank you. And I agree with what my colleagues have said about the airport and the plans for the future. They are exciting, and I know it will be truly a game changer for the city of Mobile and for the region. And many thanks go out to Chris, and of course, all of the board, who have been so heavily involved in making this happen, along with the administration. You know, it's been a long-time dream for a lot of folks to move the airport out to Brookly, so it's great to see it beginning to come into fruition. And just as sort of a side note, here we are on the last day with some of our colleagues here, and we are looking at transferring $30 million into an account to hold for this specific project, and it sounds like it's going to be a unanimous vote. How about that?
And other council members? I want to say one more thing. The mayor had mentioned earlier that we had three ribbon cuttings in 24 hours in District 3. And, you know, I might have one or two residents might criticize me for moving $30 million, but to piggyback behind Ms. Gregory, you know, she said it's gonna be a change, a game changer for the city of Mobile and the region, but especially for District 3, Dolphin Island Parkway, an area that they really thought they had been forgotten by for years. Following the airport, rental car companies, hotels, et cetera, I see. So, this is really gonna be a great game changer, not only just for Mobile and the region, but for District 3, Dolphin Island Parkway, the Maysville community. I actually see great things coming. As the, one of the executives of Airbus stated, "The sun would never set on Airbus in Mobile." I don't think the sun would ever set on District 3. Anything else, council? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? Resolution's passed.
That's the amendment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I got happy.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that vote. I think I'd be remiss if I didn't just mention Paul West's name right now. And really, if you stop and think about the opportunity to have the funds in place to be able to make a transfer like this, and is due in large part to the fiscal responsibility and the culture that Paul kind of created while he was the finance director. So, I just wanted to make sure that I made that remark. Yep, thank you all.
True.
And again, the, thank you, Mayor, too, for appointing the board to hire Mr. Curry, Mr. Elliot Mizell, and others and everything. Thank you. Anything else from the council? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Interposed? Now, resolution passed.
21928, authorize contract of leap engineering for drainage improvements at Mill Street Park. 21929, authorize contract of tag for roof replacement and exterior repairs, Mobile Technology Center. 25930, grant sewer easement and temporary construction easements to malls for Three Mile Creek Sewer Trunk Line. And 21931, authorize contract of Athena Amano for, to provide tennis lessons and clinics for the Parks and Recreation Department. 21932, authorize contract of Sanders Highland Corporation for legal department floor replacement. 21933, authorize service contract with engineered cooling services for HVAC preventative maintenance and repairs, Mobile Alabama Cruise Terminal. 21934, authorize contract of Gorum Air Conditioning for HVAC maintenance and repairs at various city facilities. 45935, except Wingate Court and Wingate Way of Winfield Subdivision, Unit 5, for maintenance.
So moved.
Second. Been properly moved in second in the discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
I would like to discuss... I would like to discuss Resolution twenty-one nine-two-eight. That is drainage improvement for the Mill Street Park. The citizens of Crighton told me that they needed a park, they wanted a park. There was no park in Crighton. So the city owned the land over there on Mill Street, houses had been taken based on the floods of eighty and eighty-one. So I set out to create a park over there. We got a lot of equipment over there for the kids and all the trouble came when, when it rains, water stands up there for, stand out there for days. Sunny day, the kids can't go out there. So I asked, "How much money would it take to get the water out of the park?" I was told me to get the water out of the park and make sure the water is out of there and can drain off properly and the kids can play every day. It would cost a quarter of a million dollars. I allocated a quarter of a million dollars. Okay, so we got some chunk change up here. I want to know, what is this about?
That's the design.
Twenty-two thousand.
It's the design.
So is this, this is getting ready for the, getting ready for, put the drainage projects in? Okay, so how long you think it'll be before they can see this project to fruition? What's the estimation?
Four months.
Oh, man. What about six months? Want to do it? All right, okay, we have to take what we can get, but I know the people in Crighton, they're going to be happy, they have been waiting on this, they just sat out there and watching. I'm not making any more improvements only because they can't get to it. So I just have to let it go until we can get the water stopped. But anyway, all right, thank you, Mr. President.
Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Pass.
Ordinance is being introduced, sixty-four zero-three-six.
Said ordinance will lay over one week pursuant to council rules.
Consent resolution is being introduced, thirty-seven nine-three-eight through sixty, I'm sorry, through thirty-seven nine-seven-nine.
Move for, waiver of the rules for immediate consideration of said items.
Been properly moved and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Madam Clerk.
Are we laying over any of these?
Yes.
Structures? Which ones?
Forty-nine thirty-nine and forty-nine forty.
Thirty-seven nine-three-eight, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer, table wine, on-off premises license for homes to suites on Satchel Page Avenue. Forty-nine four-one, nine four-two, nine four-three, nine four-four.
I take that back, we were going to table nine forty-two also. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, we take that one off. Okay, nine forty, nine four-three, nine four-four, nine four-five, nine four-six, nine four-seven, nine four-eight, nine four-nine, nine fifty, nine fifty-one. Okay, are declaring the structures, said structures, and fixing the cost for said structures, fixing the cost for demolition of said structures. Fifty-eight nine-nine-five-two, assess cost for removal of weeds, repeat weed lien group G forty-eight. Sixty-nine five-three, nine five-four, and nine five-five are determined appropriations to the Grand at McNoia Grove Property Homeowners Association. Casa Mobile, Inc., and the United Way of Southwest Alabama serve a public purpose and approve payment. Sixty-nine five-six, approve award of special bonus to the officer for the month of September. Sixty-nine five-seven, nine five-eight are determined appropriations to Hillsdale Heights Homeowners Association and Skyline Woods Neighborhood Association serve a public purpose and approve payment. Sixty-nine five-nine, urge events Mobile, Inc. to consider recognizing Councilmember Richardson for his contributions to and, to and support of the Moon Pie Over Mobile Annual Event. Zero-three nine-seven-eight, appointment Orell to the Golf Course Advisory Committee. Thirty-seven nine-seven-nine, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a specially events retail license for B&amp;B Beverage Management on Cody Road.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Resolutions pass.
Okay, and now, forty-nine three-nine, nine forty are declaring the structures at one oh-three A and B Baltimore Street, public nuisances in order those demolished.
Move to lay over sixty days.
Second.
Been properly moved and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Lay over granted.
Okay, forty-nine four-two, declare the structure at twenty-three oh-two Roosevelt Avenue, public nuisance in order demolished.
Move to table.
Second.
Been properly moved and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Items table.
Okay. Resolutions being introduced, zero-eight nine-sixty through thirty-one nine-seven-four.
Mr. Vice President.
Yes, sir.
I move for immediate consideration of items thirty-one nine-seventy-four and twenty-one nine-sixty-nine, the remainder to lay over one week pursuant to council rules.
Second.
Been properly moved and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one nine-six-nine, authorizes facilities operation contract with United Methodist Inter-City Mission of Mobile, Inc. for operation of the Taylor Park Recreation Center Playground, Swimming Pool, and Waiting Pool. Thirty-one nine-seven-four, authorized grant application to DHS FEMA for the Fiscal Year Twenty-One Building Resilient Infrastructure in Communities Grant in partnership with MOSS.
So moved. Second.
Been properly moved and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Passes.
Call for public hearings. Forty-one nine-seven-five, call for public hearing to rezone property located at one sixty-two and one eighty-six East Drive from R-one to R-two, scheduled November twenty-third. Forty-one nine-seven-six, call for public hearing to rezone property located at the south terminus of Bowden Road from R-one to I-one, scheduled November twenty-third. Forty-one nine-seven-seven, call for public hearing to consider issuance of a certificate of public convenience and necessity to Shamika McDaniel doing business as we care adult service to operate a sedan service scheduled November ninth.
So moved.
Been properly moved and second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Public hearings are called.
Announcements.
Mr. Williams had asked that he go first, but I would not grant his wish on today. Today is a bittersweet moment. Counsel, I'm going to ask you all to turn around and just watch the screen for a second.
To council members Rich, Richardson, and Williams, we all wish you all much success and happiness. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Beth, John, and Fred, I am sad to say goodbye to you today. It has been a pleasure and an honor to work with you. Thank you so much for your leadership, thank you for your public service, thank you for your many kindnesses to me personally and your support of the City Clerk's office. I wish you all the best in this new adventure of your life. You leave a great legacy that will be long remembered. And please be sure that Mobile is a better place for customers. Thank you so much, and if you ever need me, I'm here for you.
Fred, being the longest city councilman that we have in the city of Mobile, you and I faced multiple challenges together, and although we didn't always agree, I can say that you have always kept me on my toes and been a better leader within the city of Mobile. And as far as you, John, you've been a high five, a colleague, and a great friend throughout your, for your tenure here on the city council, and for that, I'm certainly grateful. And Beth Rich, I can't think of a bigger cheerleader and supporter of public safety than you have always been, and for that, I am forever grateful. Thank you to all of you, from your service through our community to our city, and I wish you well.
Well, I haven't given a lot of thought to having to say so long a goodbye to three of my several bosses, but here I am making this video to do just that. To Fred, Beth, and John, I wish you all the best in your future endeavors. Thank you for all the support that you've given me and the City Clerk's office during your tenure here on the council. It has been quite an experience working with the three of you, as you each brought a different perspective when serving your constituency, and I think that your districts are all the better for the service that you provided during your time here on the city council. I wish you nothing but the best in your future endeavors, and please keep in touch. I don't want to say goodbye, so I'll just say, "See you later."
Hey, John, Fred, Beth, just wanted to wish you the very best as you go on to your next chapter of your lives, and just to let you know how much we've enjoyed working together. I've enjoyed working with you, hopefully you've enjoyed working with me and everybody else. And, you know, it's kind of hard to believe, but now I'm going to be the senior member on the council. Not in age, but in senior. Lots of great memories, and I just wish you all the best of life. So Fred, go forth, I know you'll be busy doing a lot of things, probably writing a book. And John, I'm looking for you to improve your handicap among other things. And Beth, cook that. Have some lollies right there. So again, just wish you all the best, and thanks for being a friend, my friend, thanks for working with us and helping to move the city forward. You will definitely all be best.
Congratulations to you, Fred, Beth, and John, on your retirement. I personally like to thank you all for the years of service that you have rendered to the city of Mobile. How much you did to constituents in your district is going to miss you all. I personally have done a lot for each and every one of you all. Again, congratulations, and continue to have great happiness and success.
I'd like to say job well done to Beth, Fred, and John. This is a bittersweet meeting on today. I'm going to start off to my left, Beth Rich. You never judge a book by its cover. Seeing Beth Rich on TV when I was in school and growing up, et cetera, I just thought, you know, the media played her as this mean, stubborn woman. And I'm going to even say this, which is not true, and, you know, had rumors flying out that she was prejudiced and all this other stuff, but you never judge a book by its cover. When I- When I got appointed to council, right before I got appointed, you know, Beth Rich, she contacted me and say, hey, I want to take you out to lunch. And I said, Lord, have mercy. I said, this mean old woman that's been on TV, always hollering, no, always voting down things, like she gonna...
You read too much.
She gonna, she gonna, she gonna, you know, really just kill me. So I had to pray in the parking lot of Old Childers, like, Lord Jesus, guide my tongue, you know? And so got inside of Old Childers and Beth and I sat down and had a great conversation. And so that's why I say you never judge a book by its cover. No matter what people say, no matter what media say, you always learn a person for who they are. And I'm glad for these past nine years, I got a chance to know who Beth Rich is. She's a person that, when she give you her word, she give you her word, and she stands by her word, and she always stand by what she believes. Fred, watching TV again. Seeing him making me laugh all on TV. I remember, you know, when it was the Budget Finance Committee, when it first popped up, you know, watching TV, Renee Diles on Channel 10. I remember him getting a shovel from under the dials and say, I'm finna get to the bottom of this. And I was like, man, that man is crazy, you know? And so when I got appointed to council, and I really didn't know what I was getting myself into. I was imagining like, when I turn forty-five, fifty, I would say I'm gonna join the City Council, not in my young thirties. But when I got appointed, I said, let's go ahead and just see what it tastes like. So I got appointed to council and just sitting up in a pre-conference room every Tuesday, listening to Fred. No telling what's gonna come out his mouth. Always make me laugh. So a lot of times I had to hold my laugh inside before I want to embarrass myself, because he was like the character of the hour. So every Tuesday, I was looking for a coming to council meeting to see what gonna come out of Fred Richardson's mouth. And that what made me run in 2013 and 2017, just to see what gonna come out of Fred Richardson's mouth to make me laugh. But one thing I can just say, that one thing I did take away from Fred is that he always state that if you take care of the people, the people will take care of you during election time. And I thank you for everything that you had taught me these past nine years on council. I will never forget you. We always didn't see eye to eye, but always looked up to you. Thank you so much, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, CJ.
And to John. John was, is a person that stands firm on his belief. And he taught me how to do that, but that's not the only thing that he taught me how to do. He taught me also to pretty much let the administration do their job, and you do your job. John said that he gets the email from his constituents, and they got issues, he sent them off to the administration, and he deleted the email. I was like, gosh, I wish I could do that, because they're gonna come back behind me in a couple more days and say, what's the status of it and everything? But John also taught me on this council to pretty much just enjoy things, enjoy life, you know? And I do appreciate you, John, for, because a lot of times when I first took council, I always, you know, used to take things home and worry about it. But John was like, look, say what's on your mind, you know, mean what you say, and just enjoy life. And me seeing him enjoying like the different sports, different activities, marathons time. I mean, he has really became a fun person that taught me how to have fun on this council. And that will continue to make me go every day, fighting for the citizens of District Three, because I have fun in doing that. Thank you so much, John. And all three of y'all, I really do appreciate you all. And I'm gonna say this one thing, and I'm gonna turn it over to Joel, then to Gina. And then we'll start from John to Beth to Fred, is that Fred and Beth, I think out of all the people and organizations and societies in Mobile, who gonna miss you the most is the Comet Cowboys. Congratulations, you all. Joel.
Thank you, CJ. I would just like to, there's not much left to be said about the three of y'all, really. Most of it's been said. There have been times during the last eight years when I disagreed with each of you. Sometimes passionately disagreed with each of you. But I want you all three to know that I never, I always knew that even though we disagreed, you were intent on making sure that we had the best city that we could possibly have. And that we had, we had a city that was fun to live in and that provided opportunity for all of our citizens. All, our disagreements were not about the end, they were always about how you get there. And I all, I knew all three of you always had the best interests of the people that you represented, not only the people in your district, but the people in all of City of Mobile, in your minds at all times. So, John, I'm gonna use a Navy expression here, which is fair winds and following seas. Please enjoy yourselves and have a great time. One guy said to me once that retirement was the best job he ever had, so I hope you all find it that way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Like Joel, there's a lot has already been said about our colleagues here. And I have to, I was taking a few notes from CJ when he was speaking. I mean, he kept going over and over about subtly, and maybe not quite so subtle, of how young he is and how young he was when he first saw Fred and Beth on TV. Okay, CJ, we get it.
Well, you called Joel old, so.
Hey, I didn't, you did. You know, no, you were talking about that mean old woman. I thought, oh my word, he's probably saying the same thing about me. But, you know, to all of you, you really do display the best of what this city is about. It's about service, it's about leadership, and really doing what is in the interest of all of our citizens. I mean, I really think that's what you all have exemplified over all of these years. And it's hard to believe how long you all have served. I mean, look at the total number of years if you put it all together. You know, Beth and I have been the only woman, only women on this council for a number of years. She served as the only woman for many, many years. And I can remember, Beth, when I first moved to Mobile, you were the only woman serving. And I thought, they are being so mean to her. You know, when I would go to the meetings, you know, I just got that impression about how mean all those men were being to you. Oh, gosh, but so much has changed over the years. And Beth, what you have done for your district, you know, you've made so many positive changes and moved that district forward. And I know that they are blessed to have had you, had you there. Fred, when I first met you, I was working for, well, I was in TV covering you a good bit of the time. And like the media today, I always went to you for that soundbite, because you always, we always knew as a reporter, Fred's gonna give you something that's going to be quotable, fun, and possibly outrageous. And they still do that today. One of the trips that I took when I was actually working for Mayor Dow, we went to Japan, and Fred was on the trip along with Clinton Johnson. And you know, when we were there, we were getting a lot of sushi. Well, Clint wouldn't eat anything, and we thought he was gonna starve. But Fred would eat all of it. He ate anything, it didn't matter what it was, Fred was gonna eat it. But it was such a great trip and a wonderful opportunity for me to get to know both Clint and Fred better in an informal setting. And Fred, with all of your ideas and your vision, just thank you so much for what you have brought to the City of Mobile. And really, happy trails for you, and I do expect to see another book. And for John, who's been a great friend and the rules man, leave it up to John, and he will tell you exactly what we do, when we do it, what the time is, who can speak, who cannot speak. But you know, we needed that. We needed someone who kept us on our toes the entire time, and it's been great. John's devotion to sports and to living the life has been something that, you know, I've really been impressed with. You know, I thank you for all you've done, John, and for how you have handed off your seat here on the council to Mr. Ben Reynolds, who was here. Ben's gonna be the most prepared new member we have ever had. And I just thank you all for being friends and for what you have done, you know, for this city. And we will miss you, but expect to see you around and about in future years.
I told everybody I would not say anything.
Uh-oh, turn your mic on.
It's a great day in Mobile, Alabama.
Alright.
That's the last time, Mr. Mayor, and it's all yours after that, however you wish to use it. I first of all like to thank the citizens of District Four who have allowed me the honor to serve. And it really has been that, and it hasn't always been fun. When I said that, when I gave up command in the army, I was criticized by General Abrams, the son of the guy they named the tank after. He got me afterwards and said, what do you mean? And I said, well, it just simply wasn't fun at times, but it doesn't have to be. Service is not always fun. But it has been rewarding. And I have met so many people that over in these last few months have said they're never gonna stop calling me or seeing me. And I just simply know that's not true. And I'm not being mean, I'm just telling you the facts are our lives are forever changed when we leave and our capable replacements take over. And I don't think that Beth or Fred would disagree. I thank all my colleagues and all the clerk's office and the mayor's office for your kind words. The words will never, won't stick with me. Everybody knows I tend to forget things. But I'll never forget you, and I'll never forget the experience. Having said that, I'll never forget my very first appearance in this auditorium. And I think it's awesome that Commissioner Hudson is here today, and it's so appropriate. Because Ms. Hudson was the only person paying attention to what I was saying. And I have never forgotten that, and I have tried, I haven't always accomplished what she was able to flawlessly during those times that she was sitting here. But to look at the person that was speaking and knowing that for that person, it may possibly be the most important day of their lives, certainly of their week or month or year, that their time down at the podium is very important. And we see it so often, and I know I've struggled to keep paying attention. But I think it's important to note that. Most people know that I normally wear red ties. I try to dress for the occasion, and my colleagues have always said that maybe I overdressed a little bit. Because Gina said one time at Senior Bowl, that somebody said they thought they saw me. And Gina said, did he have a jacket on? And the person said, I don't know, it wasn't John. Because wherever he was, he has a, wherever he is, he has a jacket on. And I give that credit to my predecessor, and that was Ben Brooks, who said, nobody cares that John Williams is coming. Nobody invited John Williams to their event. They invited their councilmen, and they expect them to not only look like a councilman, but be prepared like one. And I've tried to do that. But today, well, let's say I dressed a little bit different. I wore a yellow tie. It was given to me by a guy named David McGrath, my best friend. It was purchased at the US Senate gift off, or gift shop. I have never worn it. I looked at it, and David will probably watch this and go, you gotta be kidding. I've never worn it. I just couldn't make it look right. But somehow this morning, when I was looking through my tie saying, you know, this is an important day, what tie you gonna wear? It looked right. And I was kind of struggling on why, and maybe this explains it. I have never been much on sunsets. Boy, I like sunshine, though. I like it when the sun rises in the morning, and it's a new day. The late, great Nina Simone said, it's a new dawn. It's a new day, it's a new life. For me, I'm feeling good.
That's what you said.
I don't know all of what she was thinking when she put that together. But it is a new day, it's a new dawn, it's a new life. And it will be a bright future for Mobile. It'll be a great day tomorrow despite the fact that I'm not sitting here after November first. I know that. Well, I'll be around, I will tell you that. And I simply will look back with pride that I was given that opportunity and was able to make a difference. As little or as big as some might describe. So I thank you all. I wish you all a great life without me. It was certainly my pleasure to be here, and thanks to everyone. Thank you very much.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you. First and foremost, I too would like to thank the citizens of District Six for electing me five different times to be their representative. It's been an honor and a privilege to be your advocate and voice. When I first ran at a very young age, so when CJ talks about that old woman, I think I might have been your age then. So you need to...
I have been over here now.
You need to rethink about that. I ran on doing this job full-time, being accessible, and helping each of you receive the city services you expected and deserve. I ran the first time on having community meetings, which until COVID shut them down. I tried continuously to honor, and I was determined to have productive district meetings on timely subjects while bringing city department heads to these meetings so that you could be involved and have input in your city. I also ran on initiating televised council meetings. And remember, this is 1993. We were finally successful, and seeing that happen in 1997, which was two years after being in this building. I originally started out at the old city hall, so yes, I am an old dinosaur, I guess. And I do have that memory, which I'll never forget, because it's a lot of history there. Today's meetings are livestreamed, and it includes pre-meeting, the Planning Commission, and Board of Adjustments, tree commission, historic development as well. Your government and its actions should always be transparent. Please keep watching and learning. It's important to highlight the Playground Express, which was built entirely with private donations and constructed by citizen volunteers in 1996. The walking path was the first in the city, and it was paid for privately. The Performing Arts Pavilion was a joint project started by Commissioner Hudson when she was on our council. She ultimately provided the funds through the county to ensure it being built. The dog park was an idea of just a handful of residents who wanted that amenity at Medal of Honor Park. They formed the Friends of the Dog Park and raised all those funds, including a major donation from the Julian Marx Family Trust. That was the first dog park in our city, and it sits on four acres in that park. Playground Express was modernized in 2016 with funds from the District Six first round of funding. When the bids came in so high, Commissioner Hudson allocated the additional and necessary funds so we could proceed building this new structure, which children and parents love. I would be remiss to not thank Commissioner Hudson, who's present, for her unwavering support and guidance working with me, and for her years of friendship as well. The Splash Ground was built in 2017 with District Six CIP funds. The structure will bring more enjoyment and extend the playtime at Medal of Honor Park for children and families. I personally witnessed two generations enjoying the park while building lasting memories and making friends at the park. Because of District Six CIP, neighborhood streets have been resurfaced, sidewalks constructed, and drainage repaired. There's still a lot more to fix, maintain, and build within the district. Don't let anyone ever say District Six is new and does not need infrastructure repairs and maintenance and builds. In order to keep families investing in their homes and making improvements on their own privately, the city must step up and do the same with its infrastructure. Most importantly, our neighborhoods must be protected, sustained, or anything else will be for naught. I would greatly like to give all the city employees my thanks for serving the residents in the district. in the district, both today and in the past. We have a fabulous team of city employees that go out of their way to ensure everyone's safety and quality of life. I wouldn't know where to start in thanking each and every one of you. I have greatly appreciated your service and dedication to our city, and I hope I have been thankful and appreciative enough these past number of years. A very special thank you to the Clerk's Office. Lisa and Mary Ann, as leaders of the team, and to our council secretaries, Jada and Courtney. Without each of you, all of you, my office would come to a screeching halt, which is why you've heard from me. I've been so fortunate to work with many smart, kind, and sweet individuals in the Clerk's Office today and over the past years. I will always remember each and every one of you. Deidre Fairley and Pat Maddox, that sentiment includes you. Thanks just doesn't seem adequate. To the current administration, Mayor Stimson, all of your staff, I wish each of you all the very best today and into the future with all your endeavors. To my two colleagues leaving with me, John and Fred, it's been wonderful serving and working with you these past number of years. Fred, always remember that I voted for you to be appointed to the council. Don't ever forget that. Sometimes that haunted me. Just kidding. John, you are strict with our rules, as has been pointed out, and I am more than appreciative of the rule that you stress these past eight years that required that our agenda items lay over for one week in that first read. I was thrilled to be given more time to get answers to any questions I had and more information on each item. I wish you both all the very best in all your future endeavors as well. To the ones returning for another term, I wish you each success. Gina, I was amazed at your grace and grit as you educated this community about your battle with breast cancer. You have probably, single-handedly, helped numerous people fight that same battle with the same success. I wish you all the very best of good health and continued success with your council position. Same to Joel. May your term and time on the council be a benefit to all that you serve. CJ, you are an amazing champion for your district. I know you will remain focused and engaged at all times. And like Fred, I hope that you too remember that I voted for you to be appointed to the council and therefore help to jumpstart your representation.
All right now.
In closing, I would like to say it's been quite an experience to serve on the council. That word failed to express properly. I will finally remember and cherish each person I had the pleasure to meet and work with. I will also be remiss if I did not thank my husband Leonard, who is my greatest champion. I don't know how anyone can sit in a position as a councilperson, because as John said, it's not always fun. There's a lot of stress that comes with that oath of office that you take. And having a spouse as connected to me and as supportive of me made me the best I could possibly be, and I'm thankful to him. And I'd just like to say goodbye to everyone. Thanks.
Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Well, I probably have, I know I've seen more than any of you all because I'm older. I've been around longer. But I had a long, long way. It was, it's a long road from Neps, the little community I was born in. It's a long road from Neps up here now, I'll tell you that right now. As a matter of fact, I am the first generation to be born with the standing schoolhouse. My daddy never went to school. His daddy never went to school. His daddy never went to school. They had no school. When I was born, a school was there, waiting on me. But I represent the first generation to be born with a schoolhouse standing there. And of course, wasn't much hope, because they had to base our lives on those who lived before us. Wasn't a whole lot of hope. I was blessed that my mother was a schoolteacher. She came there as a pioneer schoolteacher. She was a valedictorian of her class. She knew the value of education, so when my daddy died when I was 16, she insisted. I tried to volunteer for the military. Your daddy would turn over in his grave, you going to school? So I knew then, nothing would prevent me from going to school. So when I was 18, I left. That kinda, I couldn't, I couldn't graduate from high school because they wouldn't allow me to go to high school. I graduated from a training school that was built just for people who looked like me. And I came to Mobile, and I got involved in 68 in the civil rights struggle for equality. City Hall was off limits, because I feared that they would somehow not figure out a way to put me in jail. I wouldn't be caught near none of these government buildings, not near these buildings. I stayed on the other side. I came downtown when it was necessary, because I feared all the signs are white on it, colored on it. I didn't want to be a part of it, so I stayed where I could maneuver without any stress. Anyway, by 1997, with all of my activity in leading the struggle to be free, I was nominated to serve on the city council. I published a book in 1978, The Genesis and the Exodus of Now. People copied part of it and went throughout the white community and distributed that Fred was a racist, that he hates white people. And it was distributed all, all those. So when I, when I got down here, they showed me what had been distributed. Good gracious, alive. So now Councilman Vivian Fickers is no longer here, so it's six councilmembers. Okay, so Thomas Sullivan had his own candidate that he wanted to replace Vivian Fickers. So it was five people there, 'cause I scratched Thomas Sullivan, one black and four white. I said, "I don't stand a chance." I saw no way that I would be confirmed to serve on this body. They had people, every one of them was black. They had speakers, "We don't want him. Oh, we don't want Fred. Go back, please, please." Finally, Wallace said, "We've heard enough talk. It's time to vote. Let's vote." Oh, please. Five voted for Fred. Thomas Sullivan opposed me. That's how I got on the council. So Al Stokes immediately called me up and took me to the hotel lobby, and he said, "Listen, Mayor Dallas, Fred, the death of Fred, the people gonna, they done put out some stuff on you and about race, and he is afraid that when the media put the microphone in your face, you're gonna embarrass the mayor." I said, "Al?" I said, "My species is homo sapien, and I believe all 7.5 billion humans in this world species are the same. We're all humans are homo sapiens, and homo sapiens cannot procreate unless they are with another homo sapien." My great-granddaddy was a white man, he said, "Hey, hey, I ain't got nothing to say, Fred." He said, "I'm through." He said, "I'm gone." I had started my dissertation on air, and I got up out of there. I came on this council. I didn't say much until I learned what I was doing, and once I found out what I was doing, I became a vocal member of this council. I have loved every minute. I see Councilwoman, former Councilwoman Connie Hudson up there, who served, did an outstanding job on this council, probably, probably the bravest councilwoman in America. I don't know of no councilwoman in America brave than Connie. Connie and I boated an airplane and flew almost 13,000 miles to Perth, Australia. Connie and I got on the plane and flew all the way to Gata, Poland. Gata, Italy. And then we went to Katowice, Poland, representing the city of Mobile. Just Connie and I. Who, who, who else you know would have known enough to get on the plane and fly with Fred Richardson? Connie, Connie and I've been, we went to, we went to Australia, we went to North America, we ended up in Western Europe. We finally met the rest of the delegation in Rome, Italy. But we had already gone all around and did, done ribbon cutting, and when we got to Katowice, Poland, I think I was probably the only black person in at least 1,000 miles. And they was having their annual celebration, and here Connie and I stood right up in the bill of all these people, and the mayor just said, "Call us on the stage," and the spotlight was on who you think. The only black person. I enjoyed every moment, every one, every one. You know why Connie got on the airplane with Fred Richardson? Because she knew I was a respectable man. She has respect for me. Connie is my friend, she'll be my friend until I die, but then he, but I'm gonna start off like this. I'm gonna first of all say all of the citizens in District One, for seven conservative, conservative elections, voted on Fred Richardson to be that councilmember who served them 25 years. And I never had a near miss. All of my election was landslide. What did we, he ain't got 52, oh, no. I've had seven people in the race, I've had Miss America in the race. If they had put up the Miss America, she would have won. She got melted in the frame. I'm saying I've had young people, 25 years old, Fred too old, lift it. District One, boom. I give the people of District One an A for supporting me. When the media decided to vilify me, especially for the moon pie drop, that I had lost my mind, I took $9,000 of the city's money, we could have, we could have fed the hungry, clothed the naked, you know, provided houses to the homeless, and he done spent the money on moon pies. So we got the people all hyped up. You know what the people in District One did? Nothing. The people in District One supported Fred Richardson. Their point is Fred has a reason for spending $9,000, and we gonna see what it is. You know what it was? It was the $5.6 million we generate every year. It was gunning the media attention in the entire central time zone. It's not bigger than us in the central time zone. Moon pie drop is headed to the central time zone. Nobody believed that that's what it's going to be. But the people in District One, they were with me 100%. To the Mobile City Council, I want to say that the affirmative five votes of the council to pass legislation has resulted in this council and councils of the past being among the most productive and efficient councils in the nation, in my opinion. What put us ahead of all these other councils? We are forced to discuss matters. We, 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 the five votes being 10 on four members' rule, 10 on three members' rule, it takes five. So we got to sit down and reach consensus before we can go forward. You know, I would imagine some people say, you know, if I just had four votes, especially if it got four people look like me, I can move on. Yeah, but you won't end up with the best product. Once you have to reach consensus, then you could hear everybody's side and pick the best route to go. That's what we do. Every, I might say, "I don't like that." End up voting for it, because by the time I hear from John, Gina Best, and CJ, with all of their ideas about the same thing, I changed my mind. Mm-mm, I'm going with them. That's what happened in almost every occasion. It's the affirmative five votes who sets us apart from all these other councils, all that bickering, all that meeting all night and fighting the mayor at the council meeting. We don't have no bickering and arguing up in here. We debate the matter. We debate the issue. When he calls for the vote, we vote, we through with that, we move on to the next item. It sets us apart from the rest of them. Some view debating as controversial. We debate, we debate until we have to reach consensus. So I hope the members of the council, when the new councilmembers come in, that you all let them know what we are doing. We are just trying to reach consensus. I'm happy to say that I have a relationship with every member of the council. I don't have nothing but respect for every one of them. Every member of this council. I don't have nothing, and I hold every one of them in the highest regard, every councilmember. Best and I often find ourselves apart from others standing up for neighborhoods across the city of Mobile. That's what we have done all the time, and we hope that whoever it is that replaces us gonna stand up for the neighborhood. And sometimes people don't understand what we are doing. That's all we are doing. When they say, "We're gonna spend $6 million, where are the people in this? How can the people, how can the folks in District One benefit from this? That's what I'm looking for. But how, how, how is it gonna help the people out there? And to the new council, the standard has been set, I'll challenge you, to raise it even higher and never let it descend. Put the people first, and you will never go wrong. We, the standard has already been set. Don't let it fall. The standard has been set. To Mayor Stimson, I want to say, I believe that since I don't go alone to get along, I am often viewed as anti-male Stimson by some. I didn't go alone to get along with no, none of the mayors. It's who I am. The real truth is, I have supported 99% of every agenda item the mayor sponsored. How you all to judge whether or not I support the mayors? It's voting time. That's how you, you have to judge that. 99% of the time, whatever the mayor puts up, I vote for it. However, the ones I oppose were big ones, like Annexation and UDC, where the eyes of the world are on those two. I may have voted, I may have voted for 300 in a row, but here come one of these big ones, Annexation and UDC. They were not big because you sponsored them. They were big because of the negative or positive impact they could have on neighborhoods. That's how I judged them. What impact would this have on neighborhoods? Other people judged them in other ways. I had to judge them based on the impact. But remember this, saying what I voted against and what I opposed, but remember this. Mayor Stimson, you oppose CIP. Mayor Simpson, you oppose CIP, and you refuse to give District One any of the $14.1 million in capital fund in your 2021 budget. In other words, you, when you were transacting your business, sometimes you was on the opposite side too, because you was on the opposite side of CIP. You veto it. And I got neglected in 2021 budget. It's just the way it is. I bet you one thing, you didn't hear Fred Richardson out there moaning, woe is me, I'm so sad. Move on. That's what we have to do. Mayor Simpson is a nice man, especially away from Government Plaza. In a way, he has, he's mild-mannered, kind, soft-spoken, and you come with a Christian You bounce back quickly. One week you walk away, next week you walk up. Good morning, Sandy. Good morning, Fred. It's altogether different than the week before. You know, that's who he is. You know, he doesn't, however he feels today, tomorrow it might be all something, I don't have no disdain for the mayor. Now, when Government Plaza is not in sight, and your gatekeepers are not around, I ain't calling no names, you know those gatekeepers, you really show the kind of man you are. It has been a pleasure with a mixture of pain working with you and your administration. I hold no disdain in my heart for Mayor Sandy Simpson, and I hope you nothing but success in the future. And I will close out on this. A month ago, Mayor Simpson and I had dinner together at one of the local restaurants. So all we was gonna do is eat. Do y'all know we spent about three hours in that restaurant? Having nothing but fun and enjoying each other's company. Now come, the gatekeeper was not there. It was just us. It was off the chain. It's a moment in my life that I will remember for a long time. We got to talk about our childhood. We got to talk about everything. We got, we had a chance to talk about everything. But I don't, I'm not leaving here with no disdain against you, Mayor Simpson. I hope nothing but the best for you. You did what you thought you had to do. I did what I thought I had to do. And I'm not taking back nothing that I did because I thought I was doing what I had to do for the people that I represent. To the city clerk and her staff, what can I say about Lisa Carol Lamb, our city clerk, and her assistant Mary Ann Merchant? And her professionists and proficient staff, other than you are the best among the rest? I'm gonna repeat that again. You are the best among the rest. Cassandra Jada and Courtney, you are true professionists who serve with distinction. It has been nothing but a pleasure to work with you. Lisa and Mary Ann are FFL. Let me break that acronym down for you. Friends for Life. Now, you can run, but you can't hide. And I would just like to take one other minute to talk about some of the things that during my tenure here that I accomplished, starting with the moon pie drop. You know, we current the market in the whole central time zone. Capital Improvement Plan, CIP, that was my imagination. And from reading what past councilmembers did, I don't know of no legislation in the past to be more transformative than CIP. I don't know nothing that the council voted on became more transformative than CIP, the imagination of Fred Richardson. And I didn't come down here trying to figure out what did my predecessors do. Woe is me, what shall I do? I did what I thought would be the best for the people in my district, and I didn't try to get no permission to do it because nobody in City Hall is in charge of me. I report to my boss every four years, the people. Publix. I recruit the Publix, and I could go on and on to talk about the medicines I recruited. And I'll challenge you to find me one councilmember in the United States of America who is bold enough to go out and recruit anybody. They believe it's up to the administration. It's up to the administration to do what the administration can do, but it's up to me to do what I can do, and I'm not waiting on nobody to do what I can do myself. I'm not waiting. I'm not trying to get no permission, not for Fred Richardson. One will be a resolution. A resolution I drafted calling for the city to take race off its forms and documents as all humans are in the same species, Homo sapiens, making us all members of the same race. That was a bold resolution. Nobody had thought it but passed this council. Had people laughing in my face. Fred, you know good and way that ain't gonna pass nowhere. It passed. It's on the books. A couple of weeks ago, I got a police report. Had about 20 people on there. BM, BM, I contacted the chief. I said, chief, we ain't going backwards now. It's my blackmail. I said, now, if they had been from Bangladesh, what acronym would you put down there? Which, you know, I would put the, I got a country. Put USA for me. Why you gonna just BM? WM, white male. It's just for two classes of people. It ain't for all these people. If these people from Vietnam, you think they gonna put BM or something? They gonna put their country name down there. And that's all I was saying in this, on the treat, treat everybody the same. Drop, drop that foolishness. Color my skin, can't help me, can't harm me, it's stuck on me. Anyway, that one passed. I created a blueprint for the first community center. We had, we had recreation, recreation centers in City Mobile before Fred Richardson came on board. I read to build, build a community center in Trinity Gardens. They were, had planned a better recreation center out there. I said, I want the whole family to be able to come, not just children. We want a community center for the family. So consequently, most of our recreation centers today, but the one on Spring Hill, most of them, they converted to community centers. Started in Trinity Gardens. Dodge Center was the first community center. No council, no mayor held community meetings before Fred Richardson. I started, no. I'm not talking about a meeting where something happened in the community and they call you there. Prior to 1997, when I got here, nobody was holding no community meetings. I organized my five districts, and I, I went around into a circle, a circle with my community Went, first councilmember to go on trade missions, built the first lighted basketball court, probably in the nation. I'm the first to be invited to address the National League of Cities, I sponsored ordinance keeping the oil storage tanks out of Africa town, created the vision for the Frederick D. Richardson Jr. Tricentennial Park, as well as the Middle Street Park. Those are new parks, those were my ideas. I drafted and sponsored the Citizens Police Community Relations Committee Resolution that passed. I was among the first to advocate for the Mobile Police Department to, to wear body cameras. And I commend, I recommended and sponsored the ordinance that removed the Confederate flag from the city seal. I am leaving this council with the clear conscience that I did my best to represent all the people all the time. I love our great city and all of our citizens. Our mayor and this new council have this great opportunity to take our city to the top, where all other cities of this nation can be found, all of the great cities can be found at the top. Take us to the top with the rest of them, where the rest of them are, and I have nothing but peace and goodwill to leave for this city, this mayor, and all of our citizens. Thank you very much.
Councilman Richardson has really had left his mark in Mobile, a long one. Anything else from the council, from the administration?
Second.
Prop the movement is second in the discussion. John, don't fly out. Just give us 15 more minutes, just 15 minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, meetings adjourned.